Good evening, everybody. This is the September 4th, 2025 meeting of the Somerville Planning Board. I'm Mike Capuano, I'm the chairman of the planning board. With me tonight is our clerk, Jahan Habib, and our members Lynn Richards and Luke Schuster. We have, pursuant to the chapter two of the Acts of 2025, the meeting of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation. The seating is going to be available on the city's meetings and events page. Call by email, planningboard@somervillema dot of this meeting is being recorded. A bunch of stuff on our agenda tonight. Some will take a little bit longer than others. So up our meeting minutes on seven, 2025. Does anybody have any comments or questions or provisions to the August 7th draft minutes?
I have a small procedural thing that I just can't forget how we handle. I wasn't at that meeting, so.
You can, you can still, you can still vote on it so long as you think that the meeting minutes accurately reflect.
Okay.
Well, no problem. Seeing no other comments or questions, the chair moves to stop the draft meeting minutes of August 7th, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you please call?
Jahan Habib?
Hi.
Lynn Richards?
Hi.
Luke Schuster?
Hi.
And Mike Capuano?
We have meetings. I have a request in your, I believe, three seventy-nine Somerville. I don't know the applicant. A rep wants to talk to us, but I believe Steve, you have it in a written form.
We do. Yep. Yep. They've submitted a written, a signed written request. If the, I mean, I don't know if the applicants in the audience, if they have anything to add, they can raise their hand and add something at the chairs, at the chairs discretion, of course, but otherwise you guys are welcome to continue it.
Another request for continuance to the eighteenth, chair moves continue three seventy-nine Somerville after the eighteenth, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you call the role? Jahan Habib?
Hi.
Lynn Richards?
Hi.
Luke Schuster?
Hi.
And Mike Capuano?
I'm going to take items out of order. I believe we have a matter of other business, one Myrtle Street. They've asked to continue with September eighteenth as well. I don't know if there is an applicant or representing the applicant of one Myrtle Street.
This is Steve Carey. This one is my case. They were unable to make it tonight. Initially thought they would. If you wish to continue this, you can. I don't think it needs to be formally continued, but we are planning to.
Agenda. Let's.
Yeah. Yeah. If you want to continue it to the, to September eighteenth, that would be appropriate.
Chair moves to continue to September eighteenth, seconded by Jahan. Roll call, please.
Jahan Habib?
Hi.
Lynn Richards?
Hi.
Luke Schuster?
Hi.
And Mike Capuano?
The agenda items continue. Okay, up next, we have another chapter ninety-one. Requesting presentation from representatives from DCR and Mast dot. It is not a public hearing. This is something other than that just requires adoption for approval from Woodcell. Wondering if we could have anyone who's the appropriate representative to discuss. Mission. And as a reminder for anybody that's going to present tonight, your name and address or name and affiliation is appropriate for the record.
Yes, this is Richard Jobber. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us this evening. Richard Jobber, representing Mast dot and DCR for the proposed public. Mystic River Bridge provide public benefits to the communities along the Mystic River. So we had a short presentation. I don't know if you can just go through that. I guess you want to understand the project itself. So again, Richard Jobber, I'm also here with Bill Conroy from Mast dot, Melissa Lenker from Mast dot, and Dick Quotenhouse from AECom, the designer of the bridge, if you have any questions that they may need to answer. So if I, permission to share the screen, please?
Sure. And this is, this is Steve Carey. Richard, if either the, any of the people that are here with you tonight, if you'd like them promoted up to panelists to be able to speak on camera, let me know and I can, I can promote them as well. I believe you should have screen sharing abilities.
Yes.
If you don't, I can give you that permission.
Yeah, I'll share it now. They, they may have, what may want to speak. I'll be doing the presentations, just a short presentation, but there's questions that they may need to answer. That's, that would be the reasons for addressing them.
Great.
So. So again, it's, this is for the proposed bicycle pedestrian bridge over Mystic River. Again, I'm Richard Jobber. I've been working on the project for the past eight years for Tetra Tech. On the permitting side, Mast dot is managing the project and the permitting, the, with the applicants and the designer. And they'll be also working on the construction side. And then once the construction of the bridge is over, they'll turn it over to DCR for operation and maintenance. So I'll go over a few things that we got on the bridge in chapter ninety-one. Again, this was for originally for a chapter ninety-one signature for planning form. That the DEP waterways requires we obtained from each of the communities on and along the river. Again, as I mentioned, the master will be doing the contracting and the permitting for this. DCR will be the owner and operator. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the project, but if you have any, you know, questions during this short presentation, let me know. So the project's located all over the Mystic River and will land in both the DCR Draw Seven Park. And on the, on the Somerville side and then on this Everett side land next to the Encore Casino. This is a view looking at it and the proposed bridge will be.
Michael, excuse me, from my perspective, the slides are not advancing. And since we didn't see these ahead of time, I, I hope that we can align Richard's presentation with the advancement of this.
So you should see an aerial?
No.
No.
I will take it off of the.
We can see on the side.
Yeah.
Of the presentation, some small.
Yeah, can you see the?
Now, now it's it.
All right. So I'm just leaving this view. So. Again, to show on the location of it, this is only slide that I had shown that was different. This is the location of it, crossing over the Mystic River between Draw Seven Park and the Encore site on the Everett side. Again, an aerial showing the existing MBTA bridge and where the proposed bridge is going to be located. Extended on the north side from Everett to Draw Seven Park on the south side. Just a view of the landing in Somerville. It's currently under construction, but this is the landing area where the bridge will go underneath the existing MBTA bridge and land further on the right side into the proposed DCR park. And then again, just a view on the landing of the area on the Everett side, where it will be lined up parallel to the existing MBTA bridge. This is an elevation of the proposed bridge, Somerville being on the left side. It will be supported by five piers. Four of them will be, three of them will be in the river. The red area represents the passageway for the pedestrian walkway and DCR. Draw Seven Park and the red area in the center of the bridge is the navigation channel where the most vessels will be passing through. The design again is supported by these piers and some V arches and there'll be a steel arch over the center span. This is very similar to the project that was actually in front of the approved by the Conservation Commission, you know, several years ago. It's slightly modified design, which is now a much wider bridge. Originally was twelve feet wide clear and now it's eighteen feet wide clear. This is a profile again showing it, looking at it, excuse me, plan view showing it, looking where it lands and Draw Seven Park and its connections to proposed pathways. A couple of views of the proposed bridge. You're looking from the Somerville side towards the Everett side on the left side. And then the right side of you of the arch. Again, a couple of other views showing what it we anticipate it to look like. Both in the perspective of any pedestrians or bicyclists and then cross section of the bridge showing the separation of the areas. And this is a view of the rendering of the proposed Draw Seven Park in the landing area where the bridge will land and then connect to various paths in the Draw Seven Park. Now we got in chapter ninety-one. Purpose of this, of us getting a chapter ninety-one is because it is in filled tidelands and flowed tidelands and it must be compliant with the regulations for chapter ninety-one. The yellow line here on the left side is the historic high watermark. So everything seaward of that is in chapter ninety-one jurisdiction. So I'll just go over some of the chapter ninety-one compliance and benefits. The thing about this bridge is that it will definitely promote public access and waterfront features. Mainly with the connecting walkways, some of which are still under construction such as the north, northern strand on the north side. The DCR Draw Seven Park on the south side and to exist in pathways such as the connection to Gateway Park and boardwalk along the Encore Boston Harbor Resort. Some of the other key compliance for chapter ninety-one is that it maintains a navigable waterway. It does comply with all the fill and structure requirements and standards. It does promote and preserve water-related public rights, including access to the waterfront as well as water-dependent uses. And it will comply with all the engineering standards. Just a little background, the project site is currently in a twenty-five percent design. Mast dot is working with the engineering firm AECom on this and they're advancing the design now beyond that. So that's explained in this schedule where we're, you know, we currently finished the twenty-five percent design. By the, this March, we hope to complete all the permitting for the project. And then in, starting in March, they're going to be sending out design build requests for proposals and working with whoever they decide to contract with the project, starting in the fall of next year and then hopefully construction would end in the spring of twenty twenty-nine. So that's brief presentation on the project. Has open questions?
I'll just say this is a long time coming. It's something that I've hoped to see for many, many years. So I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah.
Anybody else on the planning board have any comments or questions or point of discussion for this? Let's see Lynn?
Yeah, Michael, maybe you or Steve could ground us a little bit in in what our role is on this pedestrian bridge. Richard talked a lot about jurisdiction ninety-one. So I have no idea what jurisdiction ninety-one is. I'm an urban designer. So maybe someone can kind of fill me in on, on the lens through which we need to be looking at it. From my perspective, this, it's, pedestrian bridges are amazing. And they represent a significant amount of infrastructure expenditures. And because of that, from my perspective, in terms of ensuring that Somerville maintains and increases its vibrancy. The design of the bridge and how it connects to the park, the ADA access, you know, a whole number of, of different design issues, which we didn't really look at. I mean, it's a small little picture where we kind of saw a sketch drawing. If we're at twenty-five percent design, that, that's, 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 that's designed to cost and, but we haven't really seen like conceptual drawings of of the, like the details on the bridges. I've done a lot of work on pedestrian bridges and this feels like a very, very little information. But maybe that's where I started with my first question. Maybe it's because the limited realm of our review, Michael, is we can only really look at this aspect of it, at which point I'll shove all my comments down and just look at that one aspect. So if somebody could elucidate me, I'd really appreciate it.
I'll, I'll let Steve start and I can continue with my understanding of the planning board's role here, which is fairly limited.
I would, Lynn, I would say my understanding is it's fairly limited as well. I understand it's a, you know, it's a requirement from state law that the local planning boards endorse a project like this that's affecting a, a waterway, I guess, you know, adjacent to municipal land. Whether with that endorsement, the planning board is able to submit comments, I don't know. Richard may have more experience with, with these sort of required endorsements from, from planning boards and may be able to speak to that.
Yes, certainly. So a couple responses, a couple of questions. First one, is your last one. Is that we did notice the Somerville Planning Board several, actually in early June with the chapter ninety-one application and its public comment period. So there was allowance to provide comments back in June, I think it was June eleventh through July eleventh. For the planning board then. And then put the project in context, we have already, we were previously approved by the Conservation Commission for the earlier design, which was pretty well detailed. We have since submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission for the revised design. So it is actually quite detailed now in terms of what's been, what's being proposed. There are engineered drawings available. They have been certainly vetted by Mast port and others, excuse me, Mast dot and others. And those are currently going through review and approval now, along with other submitted to DEP for its water quality certification. Waterways through the Army Corps, they're reviewing it now. So it is at a higher level than a typical twenty-five percent design. And those are the permits that we are seeking at this time.
So Lynn, the, the planning board's role here is to, to make an endorsement of generally of the project, you know, that's been reviewed obviously by, by DCR and by Mast dot to make sure that it complies with the regulations. That, that, that come in a project like this. So it's not really, you know, our role to second guess whether the project has met those, those regulations. That's, that's for state budget. It'll be, it'll be a endorsement saying we generally support the idea of this. More specific to.
Sorry, you're going in and out. I don't know if that's me or you.
No, I couldn't hear either part of it.
I, I was just saying, our project is not necessarily second guess the determinations of other state agencies that made the determination that needs the regulations.
No, I agree with you on the regulations, but Michael, as you well know, as do the other planning board members, we have projects that come before us all the time that meet the regulations and some of them, some of them, the, the, the design of which just flows and, and helps me and helps facilitate meeting Somerville's goals. I have no doubt that this bridge meets the regulatory requirements. My question is whether or not, you know, this, this bridge is probably going to be hundreds of millions of dollars. Does this design best meet and help facilitate, you know, all of the different goals that we have for Somerville? I mean, that, that's.
Lynn, here's what, here's what I'm going to do. Here's, here's what I'll propose.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's get an opinion from our solicitors to specifically what our role on our chapter ninety-one project, because this isn't something that we see terribly often. I think that will clarify what it is that we need to consider.
That, that.
By other folks who represent the project. To recognize the first person I see, Dirk.
Michael, you're, you're, you're coming, you're kind of coming in and out there. But it sounds like your recommendation is us to get a opinion from the legal department.
It is. And I also, I also want to recognize the two folks who were involved in the project who have raised their hands.
Oh, thank you. Yep. I will promote them to panelists. I just promoted William and Dirk to panelists. William and Dirk, you should be able to unmute and come on camera if you wish.
Okay. Can't find the camera. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I'm looking for the camera. It's been a while since I've been over the city of Boston with these Zoom meetings. So we're back here. So my name is William Conroy. I'm the project manager here at Mast dot, working major projects. I think to answer Lynn's quick question is that we're going to have a twenty-five percent design public hearing. October was technically, it's scheduled right now for October twenty-first next month. So it'll be a virtual meeting. We will get all comments weighed in from the general public. Right now, we're at twenty-five percent design and we, that, that's a design, design public hearing that, that's a requirement for Mast DOT with our projects. And we look for any feedback from the public and we take those quite seriously. And then we, we take those comments and we address those comments to the public. So that's, I think that would ease everybody, the panelists. In other words, we're not running around here designing something in a, in a shoebox and then just putting it out there. So we have a lot of eyes on this. We're not only working with Somerville. We're working with Everett and we're working with others outside of the community as well. So it's specifically working with DCR and Draw Seven Park. And I know Lynn, you mentioned some stuff with as far as safety and ADA compliance. And those are the things we're strongly considering with a bridge like this, from the type of speeds from cyclists, the mode share and everything else on the bridge itself. So all those things are being considered. So at that meeting, when we present the twenty-five percent design at the virtual public hearing, which will be held on the twenty-first, you'll see all those particulars and be able to weigh in and have, you know, your thoughts and your concerns heard. And we take those into consideration in return feedback to those comments. Does that help you or help the panel?
You're saying as a member of the general public, I'm allowed to comment on the design?
Right. Yep.
That's what I just heard.
Correct. Yep.
In addition to being a member of the public, I'm also a member of the planning board and have a responsibility for the city of Somerville. Michael, I like your.
This, this was, and I, let me add, this is the first time Mast DOT has gone before a planning board for, for a sign off and a chapter ninety-one license. Okay. Not just Somerville, any city, town or state agency. Okay. Just want to make that clear. So we're here to work with the, work with the Somerville Planning Board. But I want to make that clear. This is the first time. So now we're here in good faith in putting our good faith forward with the planning board. So what I, so you understand that. You understand that, Michael?
So what I'd like to do, okay, I do. What I, what I'd like to do is, is have a, put this, put this on, on hold. Have an opinion from our solicitor to clearly delineate what the planning board's role is in this specific project. Because this is not only new to us, it, it sounds like it's also new to, to you. I'm not saying I feel one way or another. I'm, I'm more than happy to move forward with what the planning board needs to do. I think there is a little bit of confusion as to exactly what the planning board's role is in this type of, of an application, because we haven't really seen it before and, and you haven't done it before. And I think that would give the members of the board a more proper context in, in how to look at what has been presented tonight.
And if I could add, this is Dirk. Could you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. So just, just as I know it, the planning board's role is yeah, for the chapter ninety-one from DEP is that it is the option of a planning board to request to have comments and a presentation. And then if there isn't any request to do so, then the planning board still has opportunity to make comment, but it just doesn't have the presentation part of it. So it's a matter of a comment that goes to DEP and then gets included or gets looked at as a part of the review that DEP is doing. That's, Richard, you might be able to shed a little bit more light, but that's my understanding of it.
Yeah. So, so that's, that, that is the requirement under the regulations that you have the option to solicit. They have the option to solicit comments from the planning board to, to DEP waterways. If they so decide and, you know, that's based on what was submitted to them from the application, the plans, et cetera, which is still available and online. They wanted to view additional details on the project. I do want to note that I was told that the planning board, Somerville Planning Board, did actually go through the same process for Draw Seven Park when they got their chapter ninety-one license. And that they did do a sign off on the planning form that was originally requested.
I don't, I don't think that's going to be much different with this particular project. I think because this is something that's a little bit more complicated and something that hasn't been, from, from what you all have said, done before for, for any municipality in the Commonwealth. I think we just want some, some, some clarity on exactly what kind of comments we ought to be making and, and what sort of follow that we can, that we can give to, to your project as opposed to generally, I like the, you know, I like the bridge. Yeah. My comment is I like the bridge. I like the, the concept of the bridge. I think the question that we're going to have for, for the next time that we all convene is how much more than I generally like the bridge is appropriate for us to be giving here? So. So Steve, what I will ask of you is to. So, um, so Steve, what I will ask of you is to, um. Make a request of, of the law department to get us, um, a, a little bit of clarity on exactly what it is that we need to. Uh, to do here, just because this is kind of new to, new to us and, and, and new to, new to the, the presenters in this specific context.
Certainly.
Um, cause I don't want to go either above what the planning board is required or expected to do or below. Um, so if, if the answer is. We want a formal endorsement of I like the bridge, I'm happy to give it, but if, uh, what Lynn I think is looking at is. Giving maybe some more detailed, um, ad- you know, advice or questions. Um, I'd like to know if that's also something that is, um, appropriate and expected in this circumstance.
Certainly, yeah. I, I will put that request in and, and try to get something for you guys ahead of the, uh, September eighteenth meeting.
Many, many thanks.
I'm sorry. So next steps, you're gonna find out in the meantime before the meeting and whether or not you may.
That's, that's the expectation, yes.
And, and you may request additional details or you just may find out what your role is and then make.
I, I think, I think we're looking for a little bit more clarity on exactly what type of a recommendation we need to make. What can we, uh, request? Of you or what, um. What type of guidance are, are we supposed to be giving in, in this circumstance?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
To hear from you in the meantime.
So, um, so what I'm gonna do, so thank you all very much for the presentation and kind of. Letting us get our feet wet in something that's a little new to, to everybody here. Um, I'm gonna move, continue this to the September eighteenth. Meeting, um. Seconded by Jahan. Steve, if I can get a roll call, please.
Jahan Hadbee.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Uh, see you in a couple of weeks and hopefully we can get this squared away.
Appreciate it. Thank, thank you again for your time.
Of course.
Yeah. Bye.
Okay. Let's bring up Three Craigie Street, which has already been opened. Um. Testimony was taken. We got some written comments as well. Um. So if we can get the. Applicant and team of Craigie Street up.
This is Steve Carey, just promoted Adam Dash. Um, Adam, let me know if there's anyone else from your team you'd like promoted.
Indeed, Mr. Carey. Yes, uh, we have, um, Adam Dash, forty-eight Grove Street in Somerville. Uh, representing six seventy-five Somerville LLC. With us is Alexander Varelas from six seventy-five Somerville LLC. Sylvia Ilya Sheldon and Paxton Sheldon from BOSS Urban Architecture. Uh, we should also have, um, with us, um, Christian Unat. Umanya from Offshoots, the Landscape Architects, and Krista Lucas, who's the Senior Engineer from Howard Stein Hudson, our Traffic Engineer. Uh, we were last before you, oh, they're, they're popping on. We were last before you on August twenty-first for this project. I just want to give you a brief. Rundown, so in case you don't remember that, uh, this is, uh, regarding the proposed redevelopment of the property known as, uh, the six seventy-five Somerville Avenue. And Three Craigie Street at that corner. It's the gas station and auto shop, um, which sits at the corner. And it's been in the Varelas family for generations and the proposal is to demolish the existing automotive structures. And build a new three-story fourteen-unit rental building with commercial space on the first floor in the MR three with no parking. So at the last hearing, um, we had several matters that were raised, um. By public comment and by members of the board. We want to just quickly run through those and then. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Um, first up, uh, the butter, the butter to our right. Um, on Ebbetsen, facing also Somerville Avenue, um, asked about landscaping and trash and recycling. And we had some discussion about it, but we have some more detail about it now. Um, we revise, we did file a slightly updated landscape plan. Since the last meeting, which P S F has looked at and said is compliant. Uh, so Paxton, Sylvia and Christian probably can go through that if you want to, um, give them the Sylvia the opportunity to share her screen, Mr. Carey.
Sure. Um, Sylvia, you should be able to request, um, to share your screen, I believe. Yep, okay.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
You're good.
Great. Let me open up my slides and can you confirm that you are seeing a full-size screen, please?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Awesome. Excellent. So pass the baton to Paxton for the mouse, so he can point and, and. Uh, so we go to the next slide. So we just, well, first of all, good night. Um, thank you for having us. We are coming back. To just clarify like, uh, a few items, uh, and some comments. First item we want to clarify and what we heard from our, uh, our butter. Is, um, requirement that all commercial deliveries be made. By the front entrance on Somerville Avenue rather than through the Egress Alley. We can confirm that that is the intent. The main commercial access and deliveries are going to be of Somerville Ave. The other comment was to ensure that the proposed gate, uh, in the Egress Alley has a soft close or similar feature to reduce noise. Of entering pedestrians and cyclists and we agree a hundred percent with that comment. We're gonna implement that next. Um, second, moving on to trash, um, the comment was to reconsider the, the trash handling plan. Then, uh, basically because of the concern of the barrels. Uh, in close proximity to windows and creating disturbances. So we, uh, they want us to, uh, continue to propose. Uh, dumpster solution on Craigie. Uh, allowing pickup, uh, at the legal address of the residential unit. This is the butter's comment. And we have reviewed this, uh, with careful consideration, uh, in, in terms of their suggestions. The current residential lobby. Width is at a minimum based on Somerville zoning code. The commercial depth. Uh, is at a minimum based on Somerville zoning, zoning codes. Any addition of a room, and it's shown here in red. Uh, space to accommodate a two-yard, a two cubic yard dumpster as suggested. Would reduce the commercial space of residential lobby such that it will no longer comply to the zoning. Like, um, demands. So we also. Lo- uh, looked at locating where the transformer area, you know, in the back, um. Uh, and we really don't have the luxury of losing that space for the transformer, uh, in our discussions with ever. So this is really the only place. That the transformer can go and getting power from Craigie. So it can only go on this location. Um, so we contend that placing the trash inside our building away from the butter's property is a viable and sensitive solution. We are now lining up the trash and the recyclables outside of the, uh, along, you know, in the view of the windows. Uh, the recyclables and the trash are in, are going to be fenced and enclosed. So the recycling area, uh, is in the back of the Egress Corridor. Adjacent to the butter's parking lot and their own trash recycling area. So this is, we believe, a hundred percent compatible. With the current use and it is far away from the existing windows and of the units. So gonna now show a little bit more clarity. So again, just to clarify again, where the fully enclosed within the building trash area is. And where the fully fenced recycling area is. And now we're gonna show some images of what that looks like. Uh, so what you see here on the left side is the butter's property with the fire escape. You see the limits of. Our fence that has a soft close, uh. Gate, uh, and the background behind the bicycles, you will see panels. Those panels are doors. That open to basically conceal the trash. Okay, so this is within the building. An opaque self-closing door constructed with materials that are compatible with the building. Next, we have a view that shows the approach from Somerville Ave towards our. Amenities area, uh, and we see, uh, the location of the recycling area. And this recycling area is fully fenced, uh, with a six-feet-tall fence that has a self-closing access door. And it's constructed with materials that are compatible with the building. And then we have another side view of it next. You're gonna see it now walking towards the alley, um. So it's pretty, pretty, uh, concealed, right? Next, we have a view of. The conditions right adjacent to that recycling area on the property, uh, on Ebbetsens. And it's not to, you know, point out other than we're right next to that, uh, and so. Uh, we're kind of in a compatible zone, uh, with the way that is the, the trash and the recycling is being handled on their side. And I, we just want to point out that it, the, what we're doing is less impactful on the butter's than the current situation. Um, on the property. Here, we just wanna, uh, we heard also, uh, like to remove the proposed fencing that spans the length of our building. To ensure unobstructed use of the fire escape and allow for proper maintenance. And access and that the, and then we should allow fencing along the backyard property line and. Um, that's gonna sit on top of the drainage barrier where it does not interfere with safety or access. We agree, we have. You know, we're gonna clarify that our, that was an older plan that probably we were looking at, but that this is the proposed. Uh, extent of that fence, uh, which is pushed back so that it does not interfere with the landing. Of the fire escape and that is no barrier there. Um, and then furthermore, there were other comments about runoff, water runoff. We want to just make sure that there is a continuous curve to prevent. Uh, water runoff and that at the landing, there will be a drain. To address any kind of water there that will go to, towards Alex's property. So this is a view of the alley, um, and we just want to clarify a couple of things here. The ten-foot-wide. Egress Corridor serves two purposes. First, the distance, um. This distance, the ten feet, allows, uh, the existing non-fire rated. Construction of the butter to remain as is. There's no additional fire risks based, uh, on the building code to that adjacent property by maintaining this ten-foot distance. In addition, the unprotected openings, windows are allowed to remain as is because of this distance. So second. This serves as an Egress Corridor, obviously. Any reduction of width would have to be limited to the minimum Egress width allowed. And approved by, uh, the Somerville Fire Department for planting in the Egress Path. There was a comment about. Providing planting, uh, along the Egress Path and, and over the brick wall. So we would not recommend installing a living wall here because it is just simply too dark. Uh, there's not sunlight on that wall. We need to keep it clear, uh, for the butter's emergency, Egress as much as we can. And of course, uh, during off-seasons. And then to clarify that it, we're kind of pointing out that red. Rectangle over there, that trench linear drain, uh, right at the property, then will take any water that reaches that threshold inward towards Alex's property. This is the point where the curb is the shallowest because it is the landing for the Egress. Okay. And now I think Krista, we can talk about your findings with the curb cut.
Oh, thank you, Sylvia. Um, Krista Crane-Lucas with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm the Senior Transportation Engineer working on this project. Um, the project coordinated curbside uses and restrictions with the Mobility Division. So as we discussed last time, we're closing the three curb cuts. Two on Somerville Ave, uh, one on Craigie Street. Um, as part of this project, um, the project submitted a transportation access plan or TAP. Uh, the TAP consists of narrative and plans that get submitted to the city to review and illustrate. Access to the building by people walking, rolling, biking and driving. There is no more driving here. Um, and so, uh, we also identify any transportation and streetscape improvements associated with the project. So, um, the designated loading zone, uh, is proposed to serve typical deliveries like USPS, FedEx, um, and UPS. And the project recognizes though the board's concerns for double parking in the Somerville Bike Lane. So we followed up with Justin Schreiber, um, and the Mobility Division and have good news. Uh, the Mobility Division, actually, the city of Somerville has a quick build project on Somerville Avenue, um, that they're, they're working to install. They're gonna create protected bike lanes in both directions on Somerville Avenue by moving the bike lanes next to the sidewalk curb. Um, and adding new buffered areas with barriers between vehicles or parking lanes. So they're gonna, they're gonna swap the parking in the bike lane, is how it sounds. Um, it will, um, so these improvements will address the double parking concern because it's gonna swap where the bikes and the parking are. Um, and will also be constructed before this project is complete. So, so that's, that's some good news, uh, for the board. Also, um, all regulations, uh, including what we currently proposed in the, uh, TAP. Will need to go to the Traffic Commission for approval. So, uh, although I know the board was hoping to have, uh, kind of a, an Uber Lyft drop-off area. Um, we will continue to work with the Mobility Division for the final, um, curbside restrictions, uh, along these curbs. Um, because, um, because there's, there are things may change, uh, between the time of approval and when the prop- property actually goes in. So again, we're happy to continue to coordinate with mobility, um, on what they want and what the Traffic Commission wants in this area. Um, making sure that, that everything works out for everyone, keeps things safe. Um, and I believe that a condition has been included within that. Um, that, that, um, that, that includes such language to which I, 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 I refer to Adam.
Uh, thanks, Krista. Yeah, I mean, uh, mobility basically suggested that we condition this issue and it is, it is. Uh, there is a condition requiring us to coordinate with mobility, which we of course will do. I think the last issue that came up, because I think we've addressed all the other ones that came up last time, came from, uh, the planning board. A member about including whether we can include a three-bedroom unit. I would note that we are not proposing that. Um, it would put the applicant in the position of not meeting the. Uh, various criteria for the special site plan approval and the special permit. Namely, uh, meeting the intent and purpose of the MR three zone, uh, per zoning ordinance four point one point three point D. The purpose is to create dwelling unit type sizes and bedroom counts for smaller households and general buildings, which is what we have. So we are not proposing three-bedroom units because that's, I think, the point of what we're trying to do here. Um, I would note this is a relatively small building of under fifteen thousand square feet and actually of that. Um, only to about twelve thousand is residential, the rest is commercial. So there's only fourteen units in a relatively small three-story building. If we were had an eighty unit building in the MR six, we'd have a very different conversation, but that's not what we have in front of us today. So. Uh, this project meets all of the, uh, site plan approval and special permit criteria. And is a major improvement over the fully paved existing automotive use, as can be seen from the sixteen written comments you've since received in favor. Uh, in addition to the favorable comments at the last planning board meeting. It is fully dimensionally compliant, it is sustainable, it is complimentary to the neighborhood and it is transit oriented. Uh, the applicant hopes the planning board will graciously grant us an approval of the relief requested this evening. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for the updated presentation and, and walkthrough. Um. I think it certainly answers a lot of the, um, questions that were raised at the last meeting. Um, I appreciate all of that. I don't know if the members of the board have any further questions. Or, uh, points of discussion that they'd like to raise either with the applicant, uh, the applicant's team. Or with, uh, with the staff. Yes, Lynn.
I feel like I'm the troublemaker tonight. Um, Krista, thank you so much, um, for addressing that in great detail and, and Adam. Um, as, as well. I think this project is fantastic and, uh, I, I think it's going to be. Um, a, a real asset towards the, the kind of, the re-envisioning of Somerville Ave. Interestingly, I was on, um, Somerville on my bike, uh, and at Cambria Hotel, there was, um, two Ubers parked in the bike lane. Forcing me out into the, into the traffic. And I was like, see, this is exactly what I was saying. Um, but I guess my comment isn't directed towards the applicant team, but rather to the city. Um, Stephen, I don't know, I, I just want to go on the record, um, uh, uh, on this. In that we as a city, um, are trying to shift how people move. From having their own personal cars to bike, walk, transit, et cetera. And, uh, and Michael, a great example of this is, you know, this is conditioned with, you know, they're not gonna be able to, a residence not to have parking permits. I believe then, very strongly, that it's incumbent upon the city. That it's the city's responsibility, not the applicant's responsibility to ensure that we are doing. that we are doing what we need to be doing to help facilitate that kind of non-solo car travel. So, you know, we talk about UPS and Lyft and whatnot. You know, my, there's six houses on my street and my desk looks out over it. And just six houses, not 14, but just six units. And you see the steady stream of Amazon, FedEx, the mail delivery, Uber, et cetera, for six units. So having, and again, this, we, and I love that we, Adam, that you said that you'll continue to coordinate with Mobility. But I would, I want to go on the record saying that I think the city needs to be proactive. And when we're having something more than say three or five units built that we build in, that one or two parking spaces will be allocated for 15-minute parking, you know, drop-off, like what can we do to help facilitate, you know, non-single, single-use vehicle use? So I, I, Krista, I saw that report, article that's coming out on the, the rebuild of Elm, Craigie, and Somerville. You summarized it perfectly. So in this particular case, I think we're where we need to be. I just think moving forward, the city probably needs to institutionalize where we can have these drop-off zones. So it's more of a partnership kind of going into it, that you're not stuck at a board meeting with me saying, what about the bikes? Thank you. So less of a question, more of a statement.
Thank you Lynn. Anybody else who'd like to raise anything for the benefit of this application? See Luke.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll just be brief saying, really liked the project. You know, it seemed like there was general support at our last meeting with a bunch of small questions and thought this was a thoughtful response to, to most of those. So I appreciate it and feel for the sport.
Anyone? Okay, so I wanna thank everyone for the great presentations and, and working with, with the staff and working with the board and working with your neighbors. I think this is a really good project. I think this is gonna be a great improvement to, to the neighborhood. It's gonna be a great improvement for, for the city. Not, not to say that current business isn't one that I've used quite a bit. But it's, it's a, it's a step in, in a great direction. So I want to thank all of you for, for this. And, you know, thank staff for, for ushering it through. So I've got two, I believe, two motions that need to be taken. So following public testimony review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations outlined by the zoning ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memorandum. The site plan approval to develop a general building in the MR3 district, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you please call the role?
Jahan Habib?
Hi.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Caprano?
Aye. And the next vote that we need to take is following public testimony review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations and findings outlined by the ordinance. I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memorandum. The request to establish a residential housing use in the MR3 zoning district, seconded by Jahan. Steve, please.
Apologies, I was muted. Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Caprano?
Aye. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the, members of the board and staff. See you next time.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, so let this team log off and welcome in 59 Bow Street. And before we do that, I'm gonna ask the clerk of the planning board to read into the record the notice of public hearing.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. 59 Bow Street, 59-61 Bow Street LLC seeks a major amendment to the previously issued site plan approval, PNZ 21-017 in the MR5 zoning district, ZP 24-000099. 59-61 Bow Street LLC seeks a major amendment to a previously issued special permit, PNZ 21-017 in the MR5 zoning district, ZP 24-000098. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jahan. Aye.
Good evening, Chairman Caprano, members of the planning board, Attorney Anne Vigarito for the applicant, 424 Broadway, Somerville, Massachusetts. I'd like to ask that Tanya Carrier from Colsa Design be promoted as well as Naria Spalas from Colsa as well. We also have Alan Sassoon here, he's the applicant, if he could be promoted, just in case there's questions for him. But as you know, we're looking for a major amendment. We were before you on this project, oh goodness, two and a half years ago, back in March of 2024. And some things have occurred along the way as we're used to. This fourth key elements for this evening, number one, a revision to the unit count and unit type mix, revisions to the floor plans, the building exterior and design revisions, as well as the bicycle parking. This was originally going to be 15 units, it is now 13. So mathematically, that would have been three affordable units. That now goes to 2.6. So the applicant will have to pay a fractional share to the city as it's not an even number. But I just thought I would bring that out. I'm gonna ask now that Tanya Carrier has put together a slideshow. I, I think it's best we go through that and then we can discuss questions and concerns from the board. Thank you.
Good evening, Tanya Carrier from Colsa Design. Just confirming you can see my screen? Yes, okay. All right, so I'll give a short presentation. I have some before and afters just to show exactly what changed or what we are proposing to change this evening. So here's a brief summary. The main change that we faced was that the basement that was formerly proposed became infeasible, unfeasible. The groundwater levels were shown to be too high and shoring the foundation was gonna be quite difficult, given the proximity to the existing buildings adjacent to the site. So our change is to eliminate the basement level. Originally, the bike storage and mechanical area was in that level. So this would allow us to bring the bike storage room up to grade level, providing easier access for using the bikes. And with that change is where our unit count changed. Basically, the two ground floor units would be eliminated for those changes. Additional changes are to the fifth story. We changed a two-bedroom unit to a one-bedroom unit, and this was in order to provide a new lounge area, common lounge area for the resident use with also two roof decks to provide some outdoor amenity space for a common area in the building. And these roof decks are also intended to replace six eliminated balconies. The electrical wires were quite close to the building on Bow Street Place side. So Eversource has asked us to eliminate those balconies on that side to provide the proper clearance. And then on the exterior design, the balconies is the main change, replacing those with the shared roof deck. And then we have a minor change to the restaurant entry door, which you'll see in a moment. And on the Bow Street side, a minor change to the material of that area. So let's just get right into the plans. So above is our previously approved basement plan at the top and then first floor. So you can see our basement had the bike parking and mechanical area. With eliminating the basement from the scope of work, we would now move the bike room up to grade level, have a mechanical at the end of the building, and also have our, our trash room reconfigured so that our vestibule could remain in the center. With this change, we were able to slightly increase the commercial area, providing a more usable space that might be easier to lease and not sit vacant. And that was kind of the main change for the first floor. On the fifth floor, previously approved, we had one large unit, a large two-bedroom unit that took up the whole floor and had three private decks. What we've changed is we've made that into a smaller unit, which is more fitting to the building and comparable to the other units in the building. And we have a common residential area which has two common decks where residents in any unit can go out to enjoy the, the green roof and kind of the fifth floor area. Now on Bow Street Place elevation, above is our previously approved, where you see we had nine total balconies. What we are proposing now is to keep the three that are not too close to the power lines just to the left of the page and eliminate the other six balconies. On Bow Street side, this side of the building is adjacent to the existing yellow two-and-a-half-story building here. And then adjacent to that, there's even a taller building. So it's gonna have very low visibility. So what we did was we wrapped the brick in our new proposal, instead of having brick the entire length, we wrapped it to where the massing breaks, providing a nice visual break, and changed that to a cementitious panel. And this is a very minor change to the commercial space. This rendering was very schematic. Once we got into structural design with the engineer, we're needing supporting posts here. So we thought we would frame this out with a nice brick detailing accent at the commercial area, and it really highlights the entry. And for our summary of original unit count and bedroom counts and proposed, originally we had 15 proposed total units, now we have 13. And two bedrooms, we had three, now we have two. One bedroom stayed the same at nine, and studios decreased from three to two. And that's our, our presentation. We'd like to turn it over in case, oh, I, I do have one additional. It's not in the slideshow, but today it was added that the ever, it was added to the staff memo last minute that Eversource needs to provide approval of the location before the, before the planning board could consider approving the project. So I did pull that up. We have worked with Eversource and on this design for the transformer vault on Bow Street Place and received that work order number. So that is all set there as well. So I'll turn it over so we have time for questions. Thank you.
And I don't know if anybody else on your team has any more presentation or if it's back to us for the time being?
I think it's back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. So Tanya and team, it seems to me the way you were describing it is a lot of the revisions were derived from that, that basement level that is, is going to flood. And the balcony space that isn't necessarily going to be feasible to, to build the way you thought it was. So that required some reconfiguration of, of the outdoor space of the building. Do I, do I have that right? That's, that's how I think I understood your, your presentation. I just want to make sure I'm thinking about it the right way.
Yes, and, and the outdoor space is now being replaced by a roof deck, which in some ways may be a lot nicer.
I, I would love one. Okay, and then the Eversource issue, it is what you showed me, Tanya, a few seconds ago. Is that confirmation from Eversource that you can do what you wanted to do with the transformer under, underground? Or is that?
Yeah, so this is, this is the proposal, but it has been worked out with Eversource.
Do we have some sort of a confirmation from, I, I have a question for, for you, for Ann, or for Madison? Do we have confirmation from Eversource that this is something that can happen?
So I, I believe this is the confirmation, but I will let Ann or Elon speak further.
This is something that Elon received, and when we learned of this in the updated staff report, he had had it in his email. So I mean, Elon received this, and this is what they tell on his confirmation. I mean, if you need to ask any questions of Elon, he's here and, you know, he'll answer.
I, I, I can ask Elon. I'd also like to ask, I believe Madison is the case planner, just to make sure that this satisfies staff's requirements for what you'd expect from Eversource to be able to move ahead with this proposed change?
Um, I believe staff would have to look at this to confirm because I'm not exactly sure what I'm looking at right now.
I'm happy to tell you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, so, so whenever source, anytime.
Elon, I, I know it's you, but for the purpose of the record, just a brief introduction.
Hi, I'm Elon Sassoon. I'm the developer of 59 Bow Street. So the, I'll turn my video on here. So the, whenever source approves a project, they do the, they give you a work order number, and they always seem to put this engineering stamp on here, on every single one they have. But if we show this to the electrical department, they'll tell you that it's, this is how they do it. And so this is an approved Eversource design plan. When they issue the work order number, it's an approved Eversource design plan.
I appreciate that, that clarity, Elon. You know, the planning board's not gonna move forward with this application tonight. As we'll always leave projects of kind of this size open for a couple of, for a week or so of public comment. And in the interim, they will give, you know, Madison and everybody the opportunity to review what this is, make sure that we have what we need. I don't doubt what you're representing to me at all. You know, but it'll just give us an extra little bit of time to make sure that we're buttoned up the way that we need to be. Because we were gonna leave the written comment open on this project anyway for, for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, thank you. Madison, is there anything else that you need to bring up to, to the board? Any concerns outside of what we've seen in staff memorandum?
Um, I don't believe so. Everything else in the project has been reviewed for compliance and came up okay.
Yeah, wonderful. Does anybody else have any comments or questions of staff or of Madison from the planning board before I open it up to public testimony? Okay, seeing none, what I'd like to do is open up the public hearing to anybody that wants to speak in support of the application. If you would like to do that, please hit the raised hand button and we'll call on you. Going once, going twice, I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing. And I'm going to open it up to anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the application or otherwise express concern. Going once, going twice. Seeing no hands, I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing. And our next meeting is the 18th of September. And the Friday before that is the 12th. So unless anybody on the board has anything that they would like to raise with the applicant before we move ahead with, with continuing them for a couple of weeks. Okay, seeing none. The written comment period will be left open until the, the 12th at 9:00 AM. Planning board at SomervilleMA.gov. And with no further comments by the planning board, I want to thank the applicant and their team for a nice presentation. It looks like a good project and and, and reasonable and understandable revisions from the last time we saw you. So um, the chair moves continue this agenda item to the eighteenth, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can we have a roll call?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Caprano.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll see you on the eighteenth.
Of course. I don't think, Steve, if there's anything else on the agenda outside of the um open item of other business um that anybody might want to raise.
That that is correct. I don't I don't see anything else either.
Yeah. Um, does anybody else have anything they want to chat about? Um, that's 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 not project specific and and will violate, you know, uh, noticing laws. Okay. Um, I do want to say I'm looking forward to the beginning of the NFL season and and I appreciate that this meeting didn't go so long. Um, okay, it's good to see you all and see you in a couple of weeks. Um, chair moves to adjourn, seconded by Jahan. Steve, roll call please.
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Caprano.
Aye, thanks, everybody. See you soon.
Have a good night.